So we have quorum now, so I'm going to call this reconvened public hearing of Thursday, September 30th, the order. Just reminding council that we have to ensure we have quorum through the public hearing, so please ensure your video is turned on. This meeting will be convened by electronic means as authorized under the order of the Minister of Public Safety, ministerial order number M192. And as such, council members are participating by phone, and I am also participating by phone. If my connection is lost, or any councillor's connections are lost through the portion, any portion of this meeting will reassess until it's been restored, and of course, that counts through the votes as well. So, and just to ensure we have quorum, if you're going to leave through any portion of the meeting, could you just let the clerk know, so we can mark you as absent and try to maintain quorum? The live stream of this meeting will continue with audio only, as council are participating in the meeting by phone. Presentations, amendments, and vote results will be projected to viewers when available on the live stream. Can we have the roll call, please clerk?
Mayor Stewart in the chair. Councillor Carr.
Here.
Councillor De Genova.
Present.
Councillor Fry.
Here.
Councillor Swanson.
Here.
Councillor Hardwick.
Present.
Councillor Weeb.
Present.
Councillor Boyle.
Present.
Councillor Dominado.
Present.
Councillor Bly.
Present.
Councillor Kirby Young.
Present.
The hearing has quorum, Mayor Stewart.
Thanks so much. Okay, so first of all, we want to acknowledge we are on the unceded traditional territories of Musqueam's Quorum and Sabletoose people, and want to thank them for their generosity to all who live, work, and play on their lands. Just before I go, just to make sure that, move on, just to make sure everybody's on mute, I could hear some background noise there, so just take a quick look if you could. Really want to take the, a moment to recognize the immense contributions of the City of Vancouver staff, who are working hard every day to make this a great city, and it's, which is especially tough during COVID-19. A reminder that council's role at public hearing is to be quasi judicial body, which means that council is only to consider the merits of the rezoning application or heritage designation. Council members may ask clarifying questions from speakers, including the applicant or technical advice from staff, which should save debate for after the close of speakers, which I think we've finished, but we'll have a summary in a second. So we're going to summarize, on September 17th, council received a presentation, opening comments, and asked questions of both the applicant and staff. We then heard from 19 speakers, eight in support, 11 in opposition, and then heard closing comments from the applicant. The speakers' list and receipt of public comments was closed on September 17th. So today, we're going to continue with questions to staff, and then move on to debate and decision on the matter. Of course, council can approve in principle the application, two, refuse the application, or three, defer the application for further consideration. So we're moving on to CD1 rezoning of 601 Beach Avenue, and the clerk's going to reread the application just to, just to refresh your memory, so over to the clerk.
This is an application by GBL Architects to rezone 601 Beach Crescent from the existing CD1 366 Comprehensive Development District to a new CD1 Comprehensive Development District to permit the development of a 55-story mixed-use building containing 303 strata-titled units and 152 social housing units. A height of 163 meters and a maximum total floor area of 43,745 square meters are proposed. The General Manager of Planning, Urban Design, and Sustainability recommends approval subject to the conditions as set out in the summary and recommendation of the agenda. The following correspondence has been received since referral to public hearing and prior to the close of the speakers' list and receipt of public comments. Thirty-nine pieces of correspondence in support, 70 pieces of correspondence in opposition, including two petitions with 306 names, as well as four pieces of correspondence regarding other aspects related to the application. This represents all correspondence received prior to the close of the speakers' list and receipt of public comments.
Great, thanks so much. I believe we have questions, councillors on the queue for questions. Councillor Kirby Young was, had the floor with three minutes left. Councillor De Genova was next, then I have Councillor Swanson, Councillor Boyle. However, I believe staff had received, or wanted to clarify some questions, I think that's what I'm trying, understanding here. So staff, did you have something to tell us first before we get to the question round?
That's correct, thank you. Can you hear us?
Yes, we can.
Yes, we received a number of questions from councillors via email, and have clarifications for questions from last week.
Great.
All right. I'd like to address a number of questions that were asked of staff following the first hearing date. Staff were asked how many new buildings are in development in the area, whether school would be added to the ODP, and how many units of family housing were anticipated at 601 Beach Crescent. The majority of sites in the existing CD1 have been built out, with the exception of the four social housing sites, including Beach Crescent. This is the only application in the neighbourhood that is currently in development. Further, city-owned Granville Loops development site is located to the north of the subject site, and contemplates four buildings to be a combination of social, market rental, and strata housing. However, no application has been received by staff for that site to date. The original plan included a school site, which has since been delivered as Elsie Roy Elementary School, which is intended to serve this neighbourhood and this site. That being said, the school's serving a broader reach than originally intended due to school shortages across the downtown core, including the West End and Falls Creek South. This unmet demand in other neighbourhoods has put excessive pressure on downtown schools. An application is anticipated shortly on the Vancouver School Board to develop the school site in Coal Harbour with an anticipated capacity of 320 students. Subsequent to that school site in Nelson Park is slated to be developed to provide additional capacity. These schools would not be intended to serve this neighbourhood, instead, they would meet unmet demand in their own respective neighbourhoods, reducing existing pressure on Elsie Roy. Further, a school site has been set aside by the city in South Falls Creek, which, once complete, will further contribute school capacity, reducing demand on the local schools, and the Elsie Roy School, which is a five-minute walk from this site. Regarding the unit breakdown, in social housing, there are 32-bedroom units and 25-three-bedroom units of the 152 total. In the market housing, there are 131-two-bedroom units, including five-two-bedroom and dens, and 60-three-bedroom units. These updated numbers from the developer indicate the total of 36% family units in the social housing, and 62% family units in the market housing. Staff were further asked about the average cost of turnkey units for projects. The estimated average cost of social housing turnkey units will vary depending upon the design of the building, the built form and size of the site. For example, social housing that is constructed as in four-six-story podium of a high-rise project such as this will likely cost less than social housing that is fully integrated within a high-rise tower, given the structural differences between the two building types. Also, exterior cladding systems and construction materials vary from project to project, and will result in a variance in building costs between different projects. Development sites that are relatively small and constrained typically have construction cost premiums associated with them. Projects that are designed to a higher sustainability standard will have a premium cost associated with this type of building design. All of the above factors have an influence on the cost of construction of social housing units, and can contribute to a variance in construction costs of different housing projects. The city's real estate and facilities management department uses its in-house quantity surveyors to estimate social housing construction costs to ensure that the estimated value of the community amenity contribution is reasonable, and this ensures that developers are making the appropriate contribution in each development type. The city's quantity surveyors undertake cost estimates for total social housing construction costs of each project. The average cost per unit will vary from project to project depending upon the unit mix and size of the units, and the construction factors referred to above. In response to a question about public washrooms, there are no public washrooms planned for this site. However, there is an accessible public washroom planned at the base of Vancouver House across Rawson Street from this site. Further, the city is working to provide micro retail units under the Granville Bridge over the coming year. Two of these micro retail units are set to have small public washrooms, expected to be accessible when the businesses are open. Further, the neighbourhood does have a public washroom at David Lamb Park, which is approximately 300 metres or a four-minute walk from this site. Staff were also asked if schools can be funded via CACs. Schools cannot be funded under the existing CAC policy. The city has, in the past, contributed land for school sites, however cannot contribute CAC funding for the construction of schools. CACs can only be used for growth-related capital facilities, though identified, in the public benefit strategy or the capital plans. CAC eligible amenities include social supportive housing, parkland and park improvement, heritage preservation, transportation improvement, community services spaces such as recreation centres, childcare centres, open spaces, and public safety such as fire halls and police stations. Finally, in response to a question regarding unit size and comparable sizes between the market and the non-market rental units or housing units, the housing units will meet standards set out by our housing team, which ensure the units are livable. Further, the townhouse forms along Seymour Muse, which would normally, in many projects, be high-value units, are in this case dedicated to social housing. The social housing and market unit sizes vary most at the three-bedroom unit level, with an average of 1,050 square feet for the social housing three-bedroom units, and 1,350 square feet for the marking, market, sorry, market three-bedroom units. The social housing studios average 350 square feet, there are no market studios to compare to. The social housing one-bedrooms average 585 square feet, while the market one-bedrooms 600 square feet, a 15-square-foot difference. The two-bedroom unit sizes for both the social and the market housing average 800 square feet. Thank you, that's the end of our comments.
A point of privilege, Mr. Mayor, it's Councillor Dominado.
Please go ahead, Councillor Dominado.
Has that been, Q&amp;A been circulated in writing, or if not, could we please get those in writing? It was a lot of information.
There may be a condition just on the public hearing, I'll just ask the clerks if, again, we closed off comments, I'm just wondering if that could be circulated, clerks, without violating anything?
It's the clerk here, Mayor Stewart, and yes, it is part of the public record now, because it was read into it, so if council needed in writing, that is fine.
That would be great, if you could send that around to everybody, and it's possible, that would be, that'd be good. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Councillor De Genova, we've got you on the queue for up to five minutes for questions to staff.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure why I'm on the queue, Mayor Stewart, there must be a holdover or something.
It is actually a holdover.
Thank you.
Okay, but you still have five minutes if you want to use them, and I'm going to move on to Councillor Boyle.
Not right now, thank you, but thank you very much.
No problem, Councillor Boyle.
Thanks, I had a number of questions about school capacity that staff answered in that update, so I appreciate that. The one other question that I have lingering is about capacity, as we, as we add this many new residents in our downtown core, are we measuring the need, particularly in terms of fire safety, and the number of, the ability to respond adequately as the population grows, and the number of fire staff that we're, that we're situating in the downtown core?
Anybody from staff can answer that?
Thank you, Councillor Boyle, this is Teresa O'Donnell, Deputy Director of the Planning Department. I will have to check with the long-range policy staff, I'm sure that's coordinated through the capital projects, but, and our demographics department, but I will check and try to get an answer for you before we finish up the Q&amp;A period.
Okay, and if not, I don't, I'm happy to hear that answer after as well, I'm sure it's something we calculate and weigh out, I just want to name it as one of the concerns that I've heard, I guess. But, but again, really appreciate the school information as well, and those are all of my questions.
Thanks so much, Councillor Boyle, I don't see anybody else on the, oh, there's Councillor Fry. Councillor Fry, up to five minutes, please go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor, and I was trying to collect my thoughts before putting myself on the queue, I thought I'd have an opportunity. Yeah, first staff, I'm still really struggling with some of the pieces around social housing, you know, specifically the disconnects from the Falls Creek North ODP, obviously, that talked about 20% social housing for the area. I worry a little bit about some of the apparent disconnects from the former beach CD1, or beach neighbourhood CD1 guidelines. So my questions, I guess, number one, with the CD1 366 bylaw that talks about this would contribute 152 units of social housing, and there would be remaining, as per that bylaw, 280 units that still need to be built, where does, where do, where does staff anticipate these will land, and how?
Thank you, councillor, this is Dan Garrison, Assistant Director for Housing Policy and Regulation. Yes, that's a good question. So the Falls Creek North ODP originally called for 20% of the units built in the area to be affordable housing over the years, and you're right, we currently sit at that number in the ODP area being 11.05%, and that was really due to two processes. On the one hand, in some cases, we took cash in lieu of developing social housing on those sites, the main reason being we went through a couple of decades with no significant senior government housing programmes to help us build them. And secondly, there was a delivery of more market units that we anticipated, due partly to rezonings, and partly just to unit sizes that were delivered, and those two things combined have resulted in this delivering less than 20%. In terms of the, where the additional units in the beach area would be delivered, there are still three remaining sites that are identified in the, in this CD1, in the Falls Creek North ODP area, on which the city has options to purchase those sites from the current owner, Concord Pacific, and we would be looking at ways to deliver that going forward in the future. Those sites and the capacity to deliver those units are still reserved in the, in the ODP, and in options to purchase on those sites.
Okay, so, and if I'm following this correctly, we'd have to purchase those, we have options to purchase from Concord Pacific, who are currently pursuing this as a legal matter over alleged breach of contract over social housing delivery, is that the gist?
I think we're not supposed to, that was discussed in camera, Councillor Fry, and there was information provided to council.
I believe the story's in the media as well, though.
Sure, but there's parameters on what we can discuss here, and if you'd like me to, I could just take a pause, just to get some legal advice for you on that.
Okay, sure, I can continue with some other questions at the same time, if that's helpful.
Mr. Mayor, city manager here, can I help, can I help in any way?
Please do, yeah, I know there's been some discussion about this, so if you could help with that.
Yeah, thanks, Councillor Fry, can you repeat the question?
Well, I'm just, I'm just trying to connect the dots here, that, that we're currently in, in a legal proceeding with Concord Pacific, who are the same group that we're anticipating delivering the additional 280 units of social housing as an option to purchase.
Yes, and is there a question there, or?
No, well, it was really just a clarifying question, if that is in case.
Yeah, I mean, as the mayor said, we've talked about this multiple times in...
Point of parliamentary procedure?
Concord commenced an action against the city in 2016 in respect to the property. The city has filed a response to the claim, there's been no action, no further action has been taken by Concord in respect to the claim, and at this point, there's, there's no, there's no action on it whatsoever, so it may be that it's, it's a non-issue, so...
Okay, so maybe I can make the question a bit more pointed then. How, how reasonable is our expectation to be able to get those options to purchase those sites for the additional 280 units of social housing?
Are you talking about the six option sites?
Sorry, just have a point of procedure, I've just stopped your timer here, Councillor Carr, sorry, Councillor Fry. Councillor De Genova, you had a point of procedure?
I do, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm hearing us asking questions that are outside of the public hearing process, so I'm just wondering if we wanted, I appreciate the questions, I have similar questions, but if we have these questions, are we allowed to ask them now, or because there has been in-camera information talked, you know, mentioned, would we have to defer this application to have an in-camera meeting?
You know, I'm relying on the city manager, who's, of course...
Yeah, thanks.
Sorry, it's one task, yeah.
Happy to jump in, I think, we, I am communicating...
Yeah, just so that staff use their discretion in terms of that we don't violate any of the, the public hearings.
Yes, absolutely.
Thanks very much.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor, I am using the pre-agreed-upon messaging that was outlined with the Law Department, so I, we're comfortable in the, in the zone that we're in, and as, as we've already talked about, other discussions have occurred in camera, and there's no news, no new news since those discussions. But regarding the other six option sites, we are very actively working with BC Housing and Concord on those option sites, and I don't believe there's any bearing between this project and, and those, those six sites for which we intend to build affordable housing in the area.
Okay, so we're, we can, we, we're fairly confident that we can deliver on CD1 bylaw 366 with the additional 280 units. Okay, with my last...
I believe, sorry, sorry, just to be clear, I believe there's six sites, and I believe it's 650 units anticipated to be delivered on a mixture of those sites, and that's, that is what we're working toward with BC Housing and Concord, and we had signed an MOU a couple of years ago on that, which was publicly announced, and so we are still working on that, as, as was outlined and has been discussed publicly. So at this point, I don't believe that this project has any bearing on that. The 152 units here of turnkey social housing, we, we believe are obviously much needed in the neighbourhood and across the city, and, you know, stand by the importance of delivering turnkey social housing in this neighbourhood.
I don't have the time to ask my next question, I'm going to see if I can go back on the queue.
Yeah, you can always ask for another round, Councillor Fry, and I'll move on to Councillor De Genova for five minutes.
Thanks, why don't I just move another round of questions now, because I might need that myself, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, sure, do you have a second or for that?
Right.
Thanks, let's do yays and nays, all in favour for a second round of questions, say yea.
Yea.
Opposed, say nay. Great, thanks very much, Councillor De Genova, you're, go ahead.
My, my first question is, are we even allowed, and it's, we are in questions, right, Mr. Mayor, so I can just ask his question?
That's correct.
Thank you directly of staff, if not, I respect his point of information through you. I, I just was wondering, and then I suppose I'll direct this to city manager, and maybe it might need a legal answer, but regardless of whether or not something was talked about in camera, if it wasn't presented as factual, actual information, and entered into evidence via the public hearing process before we sealed off the speakers' list, are we allowed to consider that in the proceedings here, in what we're actually considering today? I mean, yes, we may have that knowledge, but are we allowed to use that even in our consideration?
Over to the city manager.
Mr. Mayor, yeah, thanks. Jeff Greenberg from the Law Department is on, maybe I'll ask him if he is, if he caught that question, is prepared to answer it.
Yeah, I did.
Mr. Greenberg, go ahead.
It's Jeff Greenberg, and the question that Councillor Fry asked, and the city manager answered, it's fine in terms of the current status of the legal proceedings, that's public information filed in the law court, so anyone could have access to that information, including the recent, the newspaper article. And Sidhu was, was correct, there's been an action commenced, a response filed, and that's the extent of it at this point. What further steps will be taken, we, we can't judge at this point.
Thank you very much, Mr. Greenberg, that was not my question. My question was, if it was not entered into evidence during the evidence here, we, at public hearing, there is a period where we close off comment and evidence, right? Like, for instance, we close off the speakers' list, so more speakers can't speak to us today, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and we close off comments, so that any comment sent to us after that date that the comment was sent to us, because we are in a quasi judicial body, we can't consider any of that, is that correct?
That is correct.
So can, can we consider a newspaper article that was published after we closed off the speakers' list?
Well, it can come to your mind, but, but it's irrelevant to the deliberation on this regulatory legislative function in any event. You're exercising your functions as a quasi judicial body, and the existing lawsuit is really neither here nor there to your deliberations.
No, I'm asking about a type of evidence, though, are we supposed to consider evidence that was provided after a current point?
You're not supposed to consider new information, but I don't consider what Councillor Fry asked to be new information.
No, I wasn't talking about specifically his question, I was asking about anything that comes into the process after that.
No, you're not supposed to, you're not supposed to receive and deliberate based upon new additional information.
Okay, thank you very much, that was my, that was my question. Okay. Thank you very much. That was my, that was my question. Now, I might need some more time to, um, ask, uh, my other questions, but I'm gonna start. Um, by asking staff, uh, you know, through the city manager, uh, I understand that we're looking at a hundred and fifty-three units, turnkey, uh, possible social housing. I just wanted to make sure that this, no chip grants would need to be allocated or extra funds on the city's part, even after these units were built. There would be nothing, uh, to that extent that would be required. Is that correct? Like, after a nonprofit were to take, uh,
Yep, I can, Mister Mayor, I can, I can speak to that.
Funding sent to that, no, maybe not just chip grants, any contribution financially from the city.
Mister Mayor, would you like me to speak to that?
Please go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, thanks. I think, um, the units will come to the city, um, and the, the city council will determine the degree of affordability if, um, if there are, if, if there's, um, as we select a nonprofit through a competitive process, if they make a proposal, um, that, uh, the city staff recommends to council. There, there could be, um, a desire to have much deeper affordability or other social supports that are a part of the project that, um, where staff might recommend additional funding. It's not, the units will come to the city. And then ultimately, um, the, the level of affordability, um, it does, you know, those, in order to provide shelter rate units, there is operating supports that are required. So it'll really depend on the, the degree with the operating supports are required to deepen the affordability. And those will be discussions the council will need to have in the future.
Thanks. We're at the five minutes and I'm gonna move to councillor Carr.
Okay. I'll put myself back on the list.
Councillor Carr.
Yes, thank you. Yep, thank you very much, Mister Mayor. Um, I, I just have one. I've had my questions answered, um, to date. Um, but I, I'm not sure if I heard correctly, um, in the introduction by staff today. Uh, can you please verify again the height of the building in meters? The reason I ask is it says one sixty-three in our reports and I thought I heard one fifty-three meters. I'm, I'm just checking.
Anybody? Staff?
Maybe I'll ask the planning staff to, uh, to, to jump in here. Ms. O'Donnell?
Yep, uh, thank you. Uh, sorry, I'm gonna ask Miguel, uh, to answer that for us. It's, uh,
Hi, this is Miguel. Um, the proposed height is five five eight, though we have a resounding condition to lower the height to five thirty-five. And the CD one is proposed to the five thirty-five, which is a hundred and sixty-three meters maximum to the top of carpet.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, is there, I know that that is, um, slightly above the Vancouver House, which is at about five hundred feet. At, at least that's what we've been informed. Doesn't say exactly the feet, but we keep hearing about five hundred feet. Is there any possibility to lower the height of this building to be no more than that of the Vancouver House? What would that entail or what would be the difficulty in doing that?
Uh, thank you. That's a good question. This is Jason Allneck, uh, development planning. Um, the height of this building is based off of the higher building, intent of the higher building policy. Uh, and I'll just paraphrase briefly. It's to mark or create prominence of the central business district and the downtown skyline by providing, providing, uh, height at the prominent gateways. So in this case, it's about creating this visual experience of a gateway entering into the city. Uh, overall, the Vancouver House has a squared off top and a squatty form, whereas this one is intended to be a tall, narrow, elegant form. It is roughly two, maybe three stories taller overall, but that narrowness gives that juxtaposition to create that visual interest. It also helps create an advantage of a slender tower, which has a less impact on the shadowing and the views of adjacent residences. So it's seen by staff and reaffirmed by the urban design panel as the appropriate urban design, uh, response for this site.
However, councillor Carr, uh, yes, the, the height can be lowered. We did look at that, as Jason explained. Uh, we looked, looked at several iterations of height. We do feel like this is the appropriate height, but yes, it, it absolutely could be lowered if that was the desire of the council.
Great. Thank you.
While, Mister Mayor, while we have, um, Ms. O'Donnell on, my, uh, cause I, I recall hearing the justification, the reasons for having it at the height it is. Can you just outline that from an urban design perspective?
Certainly. And I'll ask Jason and Miguel to help, to jump in and help me if I need to. But, um, the overall kind of philosophy of the, um, of the gateway is to really mark the entrance to the downtown peninsula. So the, the idea is that you have these two prominent buildings located just at the base of the bridge and it announces your arrival into downtown. Now, you really need at least two of those buildings to be taller to establish that prominence. Um, excuse me. The, um, at the time, the last time the higher building policy looked at specific height, it, uh, it recommended four hundred and twenty-five feet. Now, you have to remember that that's kind of taken in context to the surrounding buildings at the time. At that time, the baseline was right at about three hundred feet. So four hundred and twenty-five would be a significant increase of what was there at the time. So in the last decade or so, of course, that baseline height has increased. And so now to really mark that entrance, you still would need another approximate hundred feet. So that's why both the Vancouver House and this building was recommended at roughly five hundred feet to establish that prominence coming into the city. Hope that, hope that helps?
Yeah, that was really interesting. Thank you.
Thanks. And we're just at the five minutes. Councillor Frye, your second round. Um, councillor Dominado hasn't a chance to go yet, I don't think. Did you, are you okay councillor Dominado or councillor Frye? Just go ahead.
Sorry, yes, that's fine. Thanks.
I was gonna say, I'm certainly fine if councillor Dominado would like to go ahead in fairness.
Yep.
That's right. I think we're okay. Uh, go ahead councillor Frye.
Yeah, thank, thank you. Um, so I'm just trying to walk through the, the social housing piece on this a little bit still. Um, now, as we, um, social housing is defined by the city of Vancouver as rental housing with thirty percent, uh, at hills or below hills. Um, we, as a council, passed a motion to, um, to revisit these definitions and have a report back. And that was on June the second with the motion defining social housing consistently and transparency in the city of Vancouver. So I'm wondering, and I, I understand from previous articulation by staff, that the social housing, uh, makeup will be subsequently determined at, at a later date and these are turnkey units. My question then is, and perhaps this is one for legal, is if we approve these hundred and fifty-two units of turnkey social housing today, are we grandfathered and obliged by the definition as it stands today, rather than, say, one that we may be looking forward to as a council to, uh, enhance, uh, when this report come back? When the report comes back on the, on the recent motion from June second?
Hi councillor Frye, it's, uh, Dan Garrison. I, I don't think it's a question that needs, um, uh, legal, uh, opinion. Through this process of public hearing, uh, it's really a regulatory process between the city as the regulator and the developer as applicant. And the requirement in this legal process, uh, regulatory process is for the developer to agree to construct and deliver to the city a hundred and fifty-two units of turnkey housing. Um, at that point, it's entirely within council's purview to determine what the ultimate level of affordability will be and several other factors related to how the building will be operated. Um, and so there is no barrier approving the delivery of this, um, housing now, um, to you doing something in the future. The only thing would be that if it's delivered and secured as social housing and that's in the agreements, uh, you wouldn't say be able to deliver, uh, less than the baseline requirement of affordability to achieve the definition of social housing. But it is completely within your purview to decide to do something different and achieve, uh, and achieve better than that.
Yeah. And just for additional clarification, though, there's, there's, there's no real remedy to, to add a little bit more direction in this, um, as to the intent of that social housing?
Well, I think our, our view would be that, that, again, the regulatory requirement here is for them to deliver the units to us. Um, and so once that's done, the applicant has achieved sort of what's required of them as a, through this process. Um, there is lots of opportunity to provide additional direction to staff around that. Um, but that would be outside of the, uh, public hearing process. That would be through other policymaking terms. There are, um, there are gonna be several opportunities coming up for you to do that. We have received several motions, as you mentioned, from council that we will be coming back to you on. There's also, of course, the process of, um, establishing, uh, and setting up a governance and, and those sorts of issues related to the Vancouver Affordable Housing Endowment Fund, which this asset will become a part of. And that will be a, a really solid opportunity for council to inform what you, what you'd like to see done with these assets.
Okay. Thanks, Mister Garrison. Appreciate that. I, I'm good. Thanks, Mayor.
Thanks very much councillor Frye. Uh, we are on to councillor Dominado.
Uh, thanks, Mister Mayor. Um, just a couple of quick questions and follow-up. On the, um, the subject of the turnkey social housing, um, can you just confirm that, uh, because that's the city-owned housing that would go through an RFP process? Is that correct for the, um, operator?
It's, it's Andrea Gilman with ACCS Affordable Housing. Yes, that's correct. Once we get further down the line, uh, in terms of this project progressing, we would, uh, run an RFP process to select the nonprofit operator and then obviously come back to council with the results of that selection process.
Okay, great. Um, and then just a second question. Um, obviously, we've heard, um, from residents around, uh, pressures on schools, which I understand, um, we have limited control over in terms of funding and, and building of, I'm just wondering, um, within the vicinity of the proposed development, is there any further contemplation of expanded community services and not just schools? Um, that was addressed through questions earlier, but, um, I do know we have obviously community centers in that area. But is there any plans for further expanded community center spaces, gathering spaces, childcare spaces, um, and any other kind of public services that people depend on, uh, libraries, that sort of thing? Obviously, there's a big library downtown, but that, you kind of get the gist of where I'm going, is that there's that increasing pressure on the area, so.
Thank you. This is Lea Kavessers, rezoning planner. To the east of this site is the Plaza of Nations rezoning site, which is three blocks in size. The mixed-use development is planned to include commercial, residential, and civic uses, including a civic center with a community center, ice rink, and childcare.
Thank you. Oh, sorry, was there more?
Uh, no, that's it.
Okay. Thank you for adding that. Thank you.
Thanks very much councillor Dejanova. Up to five minutes.
Thanks so much. Uh, noting that there's three hundred and three units of, of, uh, STRATA proposed for this, is that correct? Three hundred and three?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. I'm, I'm just wondering if there was any consideration, um, with, between staff and, uh, the applicants to build rental instead?
Uh, this is Lea Kavessers, rezoning planner. That hadn't been contemplated with the applicant team, though.
Really? Okay. Um, so that's, that didn't come up once in all of the conversations?
Uh, it's Jerry Evans. Oh, sorry. It's Jerry Evans, Director of Real Estate Services. The, um, the applicant's obligation in terms of the rezoning application is for the delivery of the hundred and fifty-two social housing units. Um, the balance of the, uh, density that they've sought in, in this rezoning application, um, uh, was up to them, what they're planning to do with it, but essentially that they are intending to do, uh, STRATA. Uh, but of course, the, um, the owner could choose to do a rental project instead.
Okay. Well, um, I'm, I'm just considering the need for rental housing in our city right now. I'm, I'm surprised that with such a large project, uh, that this didn't come up. Now, Mister Evans, uh, correct, correct me if I'm wrong, but my question to you also now is, could the hundred and fifty-three units, could, could they not have been registered, um, uh, I mean, could, could we have looked at an airspace parcel for those hundred and fifty-three units? Could they instead be stratified and registered with, uh, title, um, and a covenant to the city of Vancouver? Uh, is that a possibility through the process of ensuring the three hundred and three units, um, if not more, were rental? And then we could have looked at a hundred and fifty-three units also in there?
The, uh,
Or we could, we could look at a pro forma, I suppose, that's based on, um, the economics of a hundred and fifty-three units of social housing. And I understand, you know, from the pro formas that I've seen, that probably wouldn't amount to three hundred and three condo units, but it would amount to rental units.
So I think there was two questions there, uh, councillor. Uh, one in terms of, um, the hundred and fifty-two social housing units. The, uh, developer is obliged to, uh, transfer those in fee simple to the city in a remainder parcel. Uh, so that essentially means that the city will, um, at the, uh, once this project has, has been developed, the city will, um, own the remainder parcel, which will include the land and the air rights above that for essentially the podium level of this project, which is the, uh, social housing. And the developer will own an airspace parcel, which essentially represents the tower form above. So that's the first part of the question. The second part was when the, um, invitation to offer went out in twenty sixteen, uh, seeking proposals from developers, it specified, um, a public benefits offering to provide clarity to the bid process. So it, in that process, it required, uh, that the respondents to that invitation to offer build a hundred and fifty-two units, turnkey to the city, and then to, uh, transfer that in fee simple to the city once they've constructed the project. At that time, um, a rental component, an additional rental component was not considered.
So it wasn't considered? I'm, I'm sorry, I don't know what my time's at. Mister Mayor, I understand with public hearing, we can
Just a minute.
Ask, uh, questions as long as we have, we need to have the information. So I'd almost moved for another round because I'm very interested to hear how we wouldn't consider rental housing sort of more of a benefit. So my next question is, I mean, was there any consideration given, so at all that our staff didn't ask if they had considered rental and they didn't ask staff what they, they might be able to get, um, as far as, as, um, height and density for rental? Is that correct? Or was there a desire to build rental? Is that, is that the case?
Um, sorry, Jerry Evans, Director of Real Estate Services again. Um, at the time of the invitation to offer, the public benefits were specified as the hundred and fifty-two turnkey housing units. So the developers' legal obligations in terms of the rezoning are to build and construct and transfer to the city the hundred and fifty-three units of turnkey housing.
I, I get that. I get that. Thank you very much, Mister Evans. I'll have to go back on the queue. Thanks very much. I'm working on something here.
Councillor Wee?
Uh, yeah. My first question is on the CAC, the twelve point one million, um, do we have a project timeline or do we have a project in mind that we'd be utilizing that fund to support social housing?
Jerry Evans, Director of Real Estate Services. We, um, we have not identified a site yet, but there are, um, several possibilities. Um, for example, the, uh, the Granville Loop site that was mentioned earlier on in the presentation, um, a rezoning application has not yet been made, but we're anticipating that there's going to be, um, a significant component of social housing and, uh, affordable rental housing on that project. And we're anticipating that potentially the twelve point one million could contribute to additional social housing on that project.
Okay. And then can you explain, um, why this project doesn't have any CDY, DCLs?
The actual, the, um, that is a planning question. Um, but I, I know the, the whole of the FCA and ODP area is exempt from DCLs.
Uh, this is Lea Kavessers from rezoning. That's correct. Bylaw number seven, nine seven five five, uh, exempt this area from DCLs. Uh, public amenities and infrastructure are to be secured and negotiated as part of the approval for each CD one, which was completed a number of years ago for this site.
So no CAC, okay. Um, and the in-kind housing units, so the sixty-six million dollars, um, at time of possession, what do we expect the assessment value of that, those 152 turnkey units will be?
The, Jerry Evans, Director of Real Estate Services. That is really down to the BC Assessment Authority to come up with a valuation of what the assessed value is of those units. But they're going to base it on, uh, the, typically, they will do that on the construction cost estimate or the, what those units of cost to construct at the time of construction.
And what is our normal assessment on in-kind housing units that have been delivered to the City of Vancouver over the past years? Do we have kind of a baseline?
I, I don't have that information because as, as the city is exempt from paying taxes, property taxes, that's not something that we actually track.
Okay. And so do we, I guess my, my main question here is, are we, what, what are we paying in valuation for these housing units? Are we, are we paying market rate as an amenity? Or are we getting this at cost, including hard and soft costs?
We are actually getting it at cost. So that's include, that's all of the costs of construction, hard, hard and soft costs. All of those, that's essentially the value that the city is getting. And that, that is the $66 million valuation estimate that we have in, in the report.
So that would, if we, we would be able to assume that the actual value to the public and to the fund would be higher once we get completion because we would gain, because this is just cost? Is that correct?
Well, this is certainly just cost. And certainly, if there's any cost escalations, inflationary escalations between now and when they actually get constructed, that is all borne by the developer. So obviously, you know, we benefit in terms of the value of those assets going up.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate those questions.
Thank you. Counselor Dejanova, did you want to ask for a third round of questions?
Yes, I do, Mr. Mayor. Thanks.
Okay. A secondary for that?
Second.
Thanks. All in favor say yay.
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 Opposed, say nay. Thank you, Counselor Dejanova. Up to five minutes.
Thanks very much. I'm, I was just hoping that staff might be able to outline the process if council were to ask staff to consider along with the applicant rental housing instead of strata condo.
Uh, over to staff.
Yes. Thank you, Counselor Dominado.
Dejanova, but that's okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dejanova.
I'm calling last name.
I did that to you last time, I'm sorry. I was just looking at Michael. He, uh, so what would happen would be the council would send this application back to staff and the applicants to look at the additional use. I'm sure it would be a, a fairly lengthy discussion. And we would then bring this application back to you in a new public hearing. We have to notify the public hearing again, give the public an opportunity to speak on the, on the changed application and bring that back to you if the applicant is willing to consider such a change after, I'm sure he'd have to do several financial analysis. But it, it would be, you would send it back to staff today to continue to deliberate with the applicant. And that, once those discussions were finished, we would re-advertise the public hearing and we'd bring it back to council at that time.
Okay. Thanks very much. I appreciate that. Also had a question. I, I understand that, Mr. Evans, you were saying that hard costs and soft costs were included. But in a strata condo building, usually what you would see in a stratified building would be monthly strata fees? Would the city be required to pay any fees on the 150, any maintenance fees on the 153 units of turnkey social housing?
The, um, all of the social housing units will, will be within a fee simple remainder parcel. So there won't be strata fees per se. However, there will be reciprocal cost-sharing arrangements with the adjacent strata owners. So for example, some shared costs, some shared services, that there would be an agreed-upon funding arrangement. But there would not be, there would be no strata fees because we're not within a strata.
Okay. I don't have any information on that fee simple agreement. Is there any way that you can provide sort of a rough estimate of what those costs would be and what the breakdown monthly would be? Would we be passing that off to an RFP operator or absorbing that ourselves as a city?
The, um, we, we don't have the costs right now. What normally happens is, once the building is very close to construction completion, the airspace parcel and remainder parcel are registered. And at that point in time, they figure out what services are, are shared and come up with a cost-sharing arrangement. Typically, what happens is that the, um, the actual operator would contribute to some of that. But there is a service-level agreement, which we always enter into with nonprofits, where we, uh, we clearly determine what is the operator's responsibility, what is the city's responsibility in terms of this reciprocal cost-sharing agreement that we would have with our neighbors in the, in the residential tower.
Okay. Thanks very much. Really appreciate that. And that is all my questions.
Okay. Thanks so much. That's the end of questions. Now we're on to the part where somebody moves the motion for debate. And just to remind you that there is a yellow memo that has been attached to this.
Mr. Mayor, I'd actually, um, I, I can't get myself on the queue right now. But I was, uh, I was hoping to ask maybe a point of parliamentary procedure?
Sure.
Point of parliamentary procedure, just because I, I'm not sure that I've done this in public hearing, but would it be best to have a motion moved before maybe a referral motion was moved? Or would the referral motion be best moved now? I just didn't want to get into a bunch of moving things and having to withdraw them. My apologies.
I've called for, um, do we have a mover for the, for the recommendation? So are you going to move the recommendation or...?
I'll move the, I'll move the, uh, I'll move a referral that I've sent in to staff.
I'll have to check with clerks, Mayor.
That's what I was asking. I was asking the question if, which I should do.
I can move the recommendation with the yellow memo.
Thanks.
Recommendation is moved with the yellow memo. And now we're on to the debate section. With Counselor Dejanova, we have you on the queue for up to five minutes on the debate section.
Thanks very much, Mr. Mayor. I've sent in a referral amendment. And my apologies, I didn't get the, I had asked for the legal because I know we are in a quasi-traditional, we sit in a quasi-traditional body when we review public hearing. But was hoping that you might indulge me, Mr. Mayor, in asking the clerk, sort of a clerical piece of this, to put that in where I have the brackets highlighted. But I, I do feel that, and I understand, I appreciate all of the work that has been done on this. But we have been talking as a council about the importance of rental housing. And that being said, you know, there are still areas that I would like to see throughout our city looked at again for rental housing, and that includes Marpole and other areas. I didn't put the word affordable rental housing in here because I hesitated in that I wanted to make sure that we still had the 153 units of turnkey rental or turnkey housing.
Counselor Dejanova? I'm sorry to interrupt you, but the clerk said they didn't receive anything from you for a referral motion?
They haven't received anything? I did send it over to council meeting amendments.
Okay. I'm just hearing from the clerks. And while, while I, I'm stuck, while...
I'll send again, just in case.
Okay, thanks. And just while we're here, I did, the counsel, we've moved, and I'm sorry, I didn't hear who seconded the, the motion.
I can second Counselor Boyle.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Boyle. Maybe the clerk's going to let me talk.
I just sent it again.
So, uh, Counselor Dejanova, please continue. I'll restart your clock.
Okay. And, and my apologies, but I did send again.
Sure.
All right. Perfect. Thanks. So, uh, in looking, and always willing to take some advice here from legal. But the purpose of this, and I want to make very, make it very clear that I would want this to come back to council, but considering all of the consideration, considering what this council has said about rental housing, what we've heard from speakers, and for the fact that it doesn't mean that we couldn't have 153 units of turnkey social housing. It doesn't mean that we couldn't do that. I was ho, and I understand that that is, that was very important in, in how, how this, uh, how we've come to this point. That's all I'll say. Because I understand that, you know, we need to be wearing our regulator hat, not our landowner hat at certain times as well. And this is one of those situations where this, this address has gone through a lot of, of discussion. But for those reasons, and the fact that I still think that we could get the 153 units and possibly a different application coming back to us, I would like to move forward with this referral motion, Mr. Mayor. And I was hoping that if I had to make any legal amendments to this, that you bear with me in, in offering me some time for a recess to do so. If not, I could move one. But I myself would want to make sure this is, is in order for those reasons. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
A secondary for this motion?
Second, Hardwick.
Okay. So I'll move this to an amendment queue if people want to debate this. Counselor Boyle?
Thanks. I know we had some discussion on this in the abstracts. But now that the language of the amendment is in front of us, I'm just hoping, or the referral, I should say, that staff can clarify any sense they have of both the outcome of these conversations. I know we, we heard quite a bit about the balance of how the numbers in terms of getting those turnkey units to be possible and the whole project viable. So interested in that and also any sense of how long it might take for this to come back to us if this referral passes.
So that's a point of information through to staff?
Thank you.
Ms. O'Donnell, perhaps?
Thank you, Your Honor. Also ask, have to rely on my colleague, Mr. Evans, to help me with, um, I speak to the process in terms of bringing it back to the rezoning staff and doing the, working with real estate to do the evaluation and the applicant. But again, this would be if the applicant was willing to consider the inclusion of some rental unit. I'm sure it would all boil down to a financial analysis and the economics of the deal. Jerry, do you have anything more to add to that?
Yes. Well, the, the social housing, obviously, we have an estimate of what that costs, 66 million. The provision of rental housing is going to impact the ability of the developer to deliver on that social housing because we know of the, um, the challenges of the economics of delivering rental housing, that's market rental, we're not talking about affordable rental. So that would have to be a conversation that we would have with the developer. It's likely to be, um, challenging for them, I suspect.
Yeah. If I can jump in, uh, city manager here. Based on what we've seen of pro formas for rental projects, the, the, uh, I would, I would be pretty confident saying, and correct me if, if you disagree, Jerry, but that, that a, the provision of a significant amount of rental in the project would pretty much ensure that the 152 units of social housing could not be built turnkey. Because it's just generally, the rental projects don't generate enough income to be able to, to produce $66 million for the construction of, of that. So I, I don't think you would get both in this context.
Thanks, Counselor Boyle. Anything else, Counselor Boyle?
Yes. Sorry, I was muted. Thank you, staff, for all of that information and hearing that I will be supporting this referral. I am very supportive of these 153 non-market units being built and being built soon rather than a year or two down the road. And additionally, I will add my concerns about the height of the building and the number and the school capacity issue wouldn't be addressed by it shifting to rental without these units. So, well, absolutely, I support more rental and I think my voting record enforces that very clearly. I won't be supporting this referral. I'd rather see that we build these non-market housing units in a timely fashion. That's all.
Thank you. Counselor Dominado, up to five minutes.
Uh, thanks, Mr. Mayor. The point of information through you to staff is just, can you just reconfirm for me how long the site has been vacant? How many years?
The, the site...
Since the determination that social housing would go there?
Uh, 1998 was when, when the city, between 1998 and 99, the city acquired the site. And it's been essentially a gravel lot since then.
Okay. Uh, thanks. That, that's helpful context. I, I just a couple of reflections. I appreciate that the subject being raised because, um, as a council, we prioritize rental housing and tenure both through actions around a renters' office, but also in making moves. And there was a report that came in June that wasn't supported ultimately by council, but was to prioritize more rental housing and purpose-built rental across the city. And one of the things that I appreciate about this is that this isn't a done deal yet. That's why it's coming to public hearing. And it is a rezoning application. One of the biggest concerns I've heard in the rental conversations we've had at council is around displacement of existing tenure and residents and tenants. And in this case, there'd be no displacement because there's absolutely nothing there. And I, we have seen projects where there's been a mix of tenure, where we've had STRATA, we've had market rental as well as social housing. And I actually think it's incumbent upon us to be looking at this further. And in the context of, the city's had this property and obviously sold the property, but since 1998, to take an extra couple of months to work with the applicant to see if this was feasible to add rental tenure, I think is worthy of the couple of extra months. And I know we didn't get clarity around an exact timeframe, but I'm happy to propose an amendment around that to set some clarity around what we, when we would expect something to come back to council. Because I think it is important that we look at this. And there's a north value. I think the social housing is critically important. And, and I would, will support this because it actually has protecting that as part of the conversation. But I would love to see what's possible. And we've seen this with a couple of other projects and before council before. So I'm supportive of the referral.
Thank you, Counselor Hardwick.
Uh, thank you. I, I have many issues with this application. And I think that Pinnacle is doing very well, from what I've been able to ascertain from analysis on these documents. We can't undo what has been done in the past. I personally don't think it was a good idea for the city to sell this property back in 2016 in the first place. But notwithstanding, if there is an opportunity to create better balance, while taking Counselor Carr's point earlier, bringing down the height, then the referral to find more information about how to rejig on the rental side is moderately appealing to me. It's a bitter pill, given all of my other concerns about this development. But for that reason, I'll support.
Thank you, Counselor Carr.
Yes. Thanks very much. I wonder if I, through you, could ask a few points of information, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
So first of all, would this addition of a requirement around rental housing in any way impact the ability of, of Pinnacle to achieve a condition, the condition of the sale that we did as a city of this property regarding social... the condition of the sale that we did as a city of this property regarding social housing? In other words, can they achieve more rental and the required 153, or I thought it was 152 turnkey units of social housing?
It is actually 152.
When the Parliament-
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I, uh, Mr. Mayor, I don't, I think I answered this question earlier. I don't, I don't believe that they can achieve both of those objectives based on the, the cost, the high cost of delivering the 152 units at $66 million. Rental projects don't generally deliver that kind of CAC. Or in many cases, rental projects do not deliver any CACs.
Right. Um, do you, um, if I could ask another point of information-
Sure, please go ahead.
Uh, um, would it, could, could the applicant then actually consider a lawsuit against us for changing their, for changing the variability of the ground rules around their ability to deliver on a requirement of the sale of the property?
Well, I'm not a lawyer, um, so, uh, I, Jeff Greenberg is here, um, to channel, you know, we can never stop anybody from suing us. Um, obviously, you already know that. But, um, beyond that, my recommendation would be that any further discussion of, of kind of legal implications would, would be held in camera.
Yes.
Anything you want to say beyond that?
Yeah, that's exactly what I was going to suggest. And the process that we're going through here is not in terms of dealing with the sale. It's in our, again, regulatory and legislative capacity. And that's, that's the hat, and that's the interest in which you're representing today. But we could happily brief you on, uh, on, uh, possible legal actions in a different setting.
Right. Um, could I have, um, uh, through you, uh, Mr. Mayor, another question, another point of information, and that would be to our planning staff. Um, um, what is your, uh, opinion in terms of the ability of an applicant to deliver on rental housing? Um, given that, at least in my experience, it seems that additional height is one of the preferred, um, options to, uh, enable an applicant, a developer, to achieve rental housing and certainly more affordable rental housing? Thank you, um-
Counselor, this is Teresa O'Donnell. And I'd like to hop into and here and help me. But just to make sure that we're clear, the council cannot require this applicant to include rental housing. That, that would be, uh, a decision that the, that we could explore with the applicant, but the council could not require that as part of the zoning. The applicant could refuse to do that.
Sure.
About a year and a half that I've been here, I've not yet seen-
You probably have been like three- Sorry, Ms. O'Donnell. Look, we've got somebody who needs to go on mute. Hello? We've got somebody who needs to go on mute. Apologies, counsel. Thanks very much. Continue, uh, Ms. O'Donnell, Ms. O'Donnell.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, yes, in the short time that I've been here, about a year and a half now, um, I've not yet seen a rental project deliver any social unit. It doesn't seem to be in the econ- economics, doesn't seem to work with the financials of these projects. So, and 152 units is a substantial, uh, requirement. I think we've heard $66 million. So, so in order for a project, a rental project to produce that type of, uh, of a benefit, uh, we would be looking at a much taller building and probably a much heftier building. It would, would be, it would be significantly larger in size if the applicant elected to do that. Does that help?
Yes, that was very helpful. That's it for my, um, my points.
Thanks. Counselor DeGenova?
Thanks so much. I just, um, I have some point, points of information for staff also, and was kind of drafting this up after, you know, I'd asked about this possibility. And, uh, maybe through you, Mr. Mayor, to, to the staff who would be working on this, I would suppose it would be, um, Ms. O'Donnell and her team. But I know it goes through the city manager. So, uh, to Mr. Johnson instead first. Um, I mean, the way that I've, I've tried to write, write this referral is options possible for rental housing. So that could mean some rental housing, right? That might not mean all rental housing, but it could be some rental housing. It wouldn't have to, you know, mean that it's complete building of rental. It could be a mix. Um, is that how you'd interpret this? That it's not completely all rental housing, perhaps?
Any, anything from staff want to take a shot at that as a point of information?
Yeah, I think, uh, I mean, I can take a crack at it, Mr. Mayor. I mean, I think, um, the project, when it comes to the point of, of public hearing, is extremely far advanced. Um, and there are, as you're already aware, time limits for them to, to pursue the development. So I think, um, you know, if, if the, if the direction was 10, 10 rental units, there, there may not be a major impact on the pro forma, but I, I presume I would interpret this to say that you're looking for a substantial portion of the units to be converted to rental, which will, I don't believe there's any way that this could have, uh, zero impact on the project's pro forma. That's how I would interpret it.
Thanks. Another point of information that I have is, I didn't note 303 units in here, correct? So would staff interpret that as they might try and come back with a project that did work? Because I haven't specified how many units completely entire project would have. And staff may indeed just return to us with the same project, but at least we looked at rental, which we've all said, and you know, I think, you know, our voting record on rental, uh, you know, I'm very proud of my voting record on rental, but this is about my record to try and create more rental, not just about voting on rental.
Yeah, I think, I mean, just to be, to be clear, counsel, it, it's really wishful thinking to think that we will get a substantial portion of rental as well as the 152 units of social housing.
That's not the question I asked, Mr. Johnson. I was just wondering if-
I'm trying to answer your question, counselor. I think the, I think the trade-off will be between the social housing and rental.
But, oh, you'll, you'll report back to us to let us know. I have seen, so, so what you're saying is-
We would definitely report back.
My question to you, although I don't feel it was answered, is you don't see this as I'm asking you to still work within 303 units? Is that correct?
Yeah, I think the, um, I think the, the, the way that I would interpret it is that you would be looking for us to, to deliver as many rental units as, as we could in, in working with the developer.
Okay. Well, actually, I, I just look at some inclusion of rental in here, but that's why I tried to be nonspecific. But I'll, thank you very much. I appreciate that. And appreciate that I also just wrote this up, um, you know, I drafted this up, counsel, um, very quickly after hearing that this, you know, hadn't been a conversation that was had. And I think, you know, when we look at the other side of this for the short program, um, which is supposed to also go to rental tenure, uh, right now it only applies to social housing, but I'd like to see, you know, us move forward and build more units more quickly. I definitely would. But at the same time, you know, when rental housing, um, and even market rental housing is difficult to find for people in our city, um, and affordable rental housing, um, and without any, any idea as to whether or not these 153 turnkey units will be at the B.C. Housing Shelter Rate Unit, or Shelter Rates of $3.75 a month, you know, I don't really know what's hanging in the balance here. So it was a, a thought that this would be a way, considering it's such a substantial project in our city, considering some of the conversations about, you know, this not being, um, you know, uh, considering the needs of housing in the city of Vancouver that I heard from speakers, I thought that this was, uh, reasonable. Um, staff says that they can do it in a few months, perhaps, and I've just said as soon as possible. They may return to us with the same project, but hoping then at least we would know, um, what rates the units, um, the 153 units would be rented out at. So, thanks so much for considering this, uh, referral back to staff, but, um, I'd be remiss if I didn't at least consider rental in our project. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor DeGenova. Just to be clear with the clerks, I wanted to, uh, enter in the debate here. Do I have to cede the chair to, uh, Deputy, sorry, Deputy Mayor Carr, or can I just say my piece?
It is the clerk here, Mayor Stewart. Yes, it would be cleaner, please, if you could hand the chair.
Great. So Counselor Carr, if you could, uh, if I start the timer, could you make sure I'm within my five?
I will, Mr. Mayor. Okay. Um, I can't, yes, that's fine. The timer, yes, it started. Go ahead.
Great. I, I won't be supporting this referral. Uh, there is all kinds of time to ask the applicant whether or not they would, uh, consider changing the rental, this kind of last moment, uh, thought, uh, which will, again, trigger an entirely different, uh, public hearing. So we're talking a huge delay in time. Uh, we have, if, if I, if I was able to come and say to you that the, uh, Federal Housing Minister is giving us $66 million for, uh, for social housing that we control the rent levels of, which is the case here, I think people will be jumping up and down. So we have this now that through our, uh, getting a beautiful building with a, uh, if, if we approve it with, uh, with an entrance way, a grand entrance way to the city with the bonus of 152 units, uh, that we can make this decision today. So I'll be voting against this. Uh, I think it is 1,600 jobs that this is going to create in the middle of, uh, in the middle of COVID with all the uncertainty around the economy. And I think delay is not what people want. People want us to make decisions. So I'm, uh, my decision today is to vote against this, uh, referral motion. Thanks. And, uh, Counselor Carr, I can take the chair back from you and switch places. Okay, thanks, Counselor Carr. Go ahead.
Yes. Yes, I just want to be, um, after listening to the responses by staff, be very clear that I am also opposed to this referral. Um, I think it's terrible process, actually, to, um, to at the very last minute put in a very significant, um, uh, change in terms of the desire of council to say-
Point of order.
We need the number, Counselor DeGenova?
9.3.
I don't think that's-
And it would be, yes, it would be, I was told that the referral was appropriate, that deferral or voting something down was appropriate. So I've just been told that this is bad process, Mr. Mayor, and I'm quite offended by that.
Okay, so what recourse would you like?
I'd just like you to caution members of council not to perhaps, um, tell me that I'm using bad process when I was invited to use this process.
9.3 is actually council members must move their motion submitted in accordance with Section 9.2.
My apologies. I have the wrong section in front of me, Mr. Mayor, but I'll bring, I will bring that up. That's all I was trying to do. Thank you.
Bring on Counselor Carr. Go ahead.
Um, so, uh, I, I really believe that, um, uh, that we need to focus on the fact that the 152 units of social housing, they are rental. They will be rental. Um, so, uh, to get additional rental, by, I think, all of our experience on council, um, requires other ways in which the developer can, um, achieve the, um, the, the problem of paying for that rental, knowing that they don't get the money back right away as they would with, uh, with units that are sold. Um, and, uh, and that, um, means in most cases, uh, additional height. That's been the, the preferred option. Already height is an issue on this particular, uh, project. Um, and there are the, um, the obligations they have to meet in terms of the sale of the property. And I'm very concerned about, um, the, the quandary that that, that puts them in and the, the, um, the, the, a, a very last minute change in, in, uh, potential change in, uh, council's, um, direction or the city's direction on this, if staff were to pursue this. So, um, I will not support it. Um, and, uh, yeah, I'll, I'll leave my comments on, on, uh, the rest of the project, um, for later. This is just specifically to the referral.
Thank you.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Counselor DeGenova.
It was 6.1, um, it was 6.1 Section B?
Great. Okay, so you've got another point of order?
No, you had asked me to sign the section.
I didn't actually, but, okay. We're going to move on to Counselor Swanson. Counselor Swanson, go ahead.
Yeah, so I really don't like the idea of having multimillion dollar palaces in the sky, but I really do like the idea of having 150-some units of social housing, particularly if we could give the nonprofit that runs them a nominal lease and have the rents be quite low. And I've been in enough of these rezonings to know that if the strata are replaced with rentals, the number of social housing units that we get will be reduced, and the rentals that replace the strata will be really expensive. So I'm going to be voting against this amendment.
Thank you. And that's, uh, it on the speaking list. Uh, so I'll call a vote on this, uh, referral. Vote yes if you want to refer, vote no if you don't want to refer, and get on to the decision today. Okay, Counselor DeGenova, we need a vote from you. I can do an assist if you like. Counselor DeGenova?
Hi, Mr. Mayor. Um, if I could get a vote in favor, please.
Okay, thanks very much. Uh, we're marking you in favor right now, and we can pull the results up on the screen with, um, myself, Counselor Carr, Counselor Frye, Swanson, we, Boyle, and Bly in, uh, opposition. Thanks. So we're going to move back to the, uh, queue. And back to the main queue. Counselor DeGenova, do you have anything else?
Um, not at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks. So we're at debate and decision. I don't see anybody else on the list. There we go. Counselor Boyle, up to five minutes. Please go ahead.
Uh, thanks. I will be, um, voting in support of this building, um, and just wanted to, uh, make a few comments on it. Uh, it, these types of extra tall shiny towers with luxury condos and a bit of social housing are not my favorite way, uh, for us to be delivering affordable housing. Um, but they have been the heavy lifters in meeting our social housing targets, and I get that, and I get why. Uh, I'd rather, of course, the whole building be social housing if we could wave that magic wand on. Um, even more so, I'd rather, uh, see us build 12 new buildings like the MERP project at Larch and Second, and build them all across the city, especially in neighborhoods where population numbers are declining and there's space in schools. Um, if it weren't 12 Larch MRPs, it could be eight buildings like the MERP at Renfrew and 10th, or three like the MERP approved at Birch and Broadway. Um, this is a significant downtown site, and the tower on the opposite side of the bridge is already being built. The school capacity issue is significant for me here and elsewhere across the city. Uh, and again, I think that's a strong argument for building housing in neighborhoods like West Point Gray where there's capacity in beloved local public schools. So I'll keep talking about that. But in the meantime, this decision is on this project, and having weighed all of the benefits and concerns, I am voting in favor of 152 new badly-needed non-market homes in our city for 152 families that will be able to stay here or move there, here to build their lives and call our beautiful city home. I will be, uh, supporting the project for all of those reasons.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Swanson?
Yeah, I thought staff's, um, answer to my questions about the schools were pretty interesting. So it seems like the plan is that more schools will be built in other neighborhoods, and that those will take up the kids who are at Elsie Roy, freeing up Elsie Roy for, for the people that live in that neighborhood. So I hope that's going to be happening, um, by the time at least that this building is built, which is probably three to five years. I, as I said before, I hate, actually hate the idea of building luxury palaces in the sky, uh, but, and I don't like the idea of a rich door and a poor door. It would be nice if we could deal with that. I just sent a report on that to, uh, staff and council, which is pretty interesting. Um, I think we should get more than 12 million worth of social, that extra 12 million. Why don't we see if we could put that in this building for social housing? But it looks like that's not going to happen. But we are absolutely desperate for social housing and for social housing fast. Um, so I'm going to cave to all of this and, um, vote for it. And when it comes back to us with a nonprofit operator for those turnkey units, I hope all of council will agree that we need to charge only a nominal lease rate so that the rents in those 152 turnkey units can be low. That's it.
Thank you. Counselor Carr?
Yes, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to be, uh, speaking in support of this, um, this application. Um, so on the issue of whether, um, first of all, for the very bottom line, I want to make sure it's meeting, um, the, the, the condition of sale, so it is. Um, and, uh, uh, but on the issue of, um, uh, so that's 152 social housing units plus the 12 million in CACs for additional social housing units, um, in the area. On the issue of separate doors, which Counselor Swanson just raised, um, staff did answer my question on that point, and, uh, and that was regarding the preference of social housing operators and make us to, uh, to want separate doors. operators and make cases to, uh, to want separate doors. Um, not poor and rich doors, but in a sense, nice doors, just not costly fancy doors. And I note the entrances are on the same street, and all the outdoor amenities are shared, which is, is to me very important. I also appreciate that the, um, units in this building are valued at four hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars in terms of in-kind CACs, and that's quite a lot less than the six hundred and nineteen thousand per unit in the building that was recently considered by this council at Nelson and Thurlow, and I very much appreciate that, um, that lower valuation. Um, in contemplating a decision on this particular project, I believe we need to ask ourselves, do we support and agree with the higher buildings policy and that, and, and whether or not this building meets that policy, because it's coming forward to us under that specific policy. So, in the past, I actually have supported the general intent of the policy, which is to identify a few sites as landmark sites or gateways into our downtown, with high expectations of unique, exceptional, world-class architectural design, as well as leadership on sustainability. Um, and I do wanna note, um, or remind us all that Mr. Gocia at the Downtown Vancouver BIA, um, did come to us to con- convey the results of his Reimagine Downtown, or the organization's Reimagine Downtown survey done, where there was very strong support for that majestic new gateway to downtown. Um, is the height out of line? In terms of the Falls Creek ODP, yes, um, but it's falling under the higher buildings policy, and, and I have had concerns, and I've expressed them and asked questions about them in terms of the height of the building at five hundred and thirty-five feet as opposed to the four hundred and twenty-five noted on the higher building policy map. Um, noting that it was also a reduction after going through the review in leading up to this, um, public hearing from a proposed five hundred and fifty-eight, and I appreciate that reduction. Um, so I, I was quite concerned at the last meeting in terms of, you know, why it's not the, you know, four hundred and twenty-five feet on the map, and, and I reviewed the policy, and I saw in that policy this little squiggly line in front of four twenty-five, which I'm now understanding means an estimate, um, not an accurate, um, maximum. And I really appreciate the explanation given by Ms. McDonald, um, around the, that kind of, the, the, the foot, uh, why the, why that certain, um, height. And that staff considered increasing the height at this gateway because the baseline heights downtown have increased, and the whole intent of the policy is to be this real landmark, something that stands out, not just the same height as the new heights of buildings downtown. So, I think the height, um, under that circumstance, um, makes sense, I'm willing to accept the rationale, um, for that height. Um, that brings me to other requirements under the higher buildings policy, two other ones. Does it meet the benchmark of, um, leadership on sustainability? I believe it does. I really appreciate the description that was given to us, and the que- um, regarding the questions I asked around, around that sustainability, and the applicant working with our staff to actually reduce carbon emissions fifty percent beyond the policy expectations through their compact design, their high efficiency envelope, thermally screened balconies, low carbon heat pump heating, all those measures. That's really in the right direction that we all need to head in the city. And finally, does it meet the benchmark of exceptional architectural creativity and quality? In my opinion, it does. I think it's a stunning design. I really understand what staff were saying to us about it may be slightly higher than Vancouver House, which is a broader building. This one's this sparrowly, much thinner building, I, you know, it, I do think it looks like a dancer, um, uh, which I think they described as to begin with. So, uh, for those reasons, I will be supporting.
Thanks, uh, Counselor Wee.
Yeah, I'll also be speaking in support, and really appreciate the speakers, um, for their comments, and also staff working with the opponent to make the changes needed. I think the public realm, um, has seen quite a bit of improvements. I appreciate the shadowing and movement of the towers. I appreciate the change in height and change in some of the form. Um, I also appreciate we're getting a hundred and fifty-two units turnkey, um, and look forward to building new policy on how we can make sure that those are as affordable as possible. Um, so overall, I think it has met our guidelines. I'm, I'm happy to support this project moving forward. Thank you.
Thanks so much. If I can, uh, turn the chair over to, uh, Counselor Carr, or just to.
Yes, um, that's fine, and, um, uh, thank you, and just before you begin, uh, clerk, if you could move Mayor Fo- uh, Mayor Stewart forward and start his timer? Go ahead, Mayor Stewart.
Thanks very much, and first, I, I just wanna say, uh, ditto, uh, Counselor Carr, what you said about this building. I, I know you, uh, evaluate these projects meticulously, and, and, uh, I, I agree with everything you said. Uh, just so council knows, I'm staring at this gravel pit right now, and I have been all the way through this debate. Uh, I walk my, uh, my wife Jeanette and I walk Fergus, our little new puppy, uh, down through this neighborhood almost every day, and I can tell you, a hundred and fifty-two units of social housing is gonna bring what this community really needs, is a mix of people. Uh, and I think I'm really excited about that. Uh, there's co-ops, uh, at least one co-op that's in the area that, uh, it, it's, it just, it mean, it needs to be a neighborhood, and to be a neighborhood, y- you have to have a, a mix of incomes and different walks of life. So, I'm, I'm excited about this, and really thank staff for all their work on it. I mean, you think it's been vacant since nineteen ninety-eight, this is, this is gonna make a big difference, and, uh, then I think about people entering the city, uh, driving along, or hopefully biking or walking across the New Granville Street Bridge, seeing these, uh, two, uh, towers that are, I think, you know, really extraordinary, and then entering into, into the city, uh, to do their live, working, playing. So, I'm, I'm excited about this project, and again, just wanted to thank everyone who, who participated and, and refined it as the way, I mean, there's been a lot of refinement on this building on the way, but I think it's time to, to make it happen, and, uh, I'll be voting yes. So, thanks, Chair Carr, and I can take back the chair if that's okay.
Yes, back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, and, um, I'm gonna call the vote. And we can just get the vote on screen, clerks, but it's, I'm sorry, I'm looking at my... Okay, we have, uh, that has passed council with two counselors in opposition, Counselor Hardwick and Counselor Dejanova. So, uh, thank you very much, council, that, uh, just flip back to my script here, so that is it, and can, we need a, uh, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Hardwick.
Thank you.
I can, Dejanova.
Thank you, Counselor Dejanova. All in favor, say yay.
Yay.
Oppose, nay? Great, we're adjourned, thank you very much, and thanks to the clerks for, for all your work today too, a- as well as all the staff as always. So, thank you, and we'll see you again shortly, I'm sure.
Thanks, staff.
Thanks, thanks, everybody.
Bye-bye.